Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. And I declare a quorum. We have two members absent this evening, but we do have a quorum. At this time, I'd like you to stand, please, for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Gessford will be leading us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of tonight's agenda. Okay, thank you. We're unanimous, and the student member concurs. That's five votes, and the student member concurs. Our next item is approval of the minutes.
President Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, January 8th, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval. Five. Motion passes. Minutes approved.
President Williams, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, January 8th, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval. Five votes, and the student member concurs. Those minutes stand approved. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Okay, thank you, President Williams. Tonight, we have two recognitions. We want to take an opportunity to recognize students and staff this evening. The first one, I'm going to ask Dr. Reinhardt and Principal Jenny Rupenthal to come forward to share a little bit of information about Springfield's recognition as an E-Gate school this year. And then, following that, I'll ask Dr. Reinhardt to stay at the table. She's going to recognize some students and teachers as well that have received state-level awards in the gifted and talented area. And after she completes that, I'd like to invite the board members to go down front. We'll recognize Springfield, and then we'll recognize our individual winners as well. So with that, Dr. Reinhardt.
Great. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Michael, members of the board. This evening, I'm proud to recognize Springfield Middle School for being named a Maryland Excellence in Gifted and Talented Education, or E-Gate, school. Springfield spent well over three years engaged in an extensive E-Gate portfolio development process. This process involves reviewing a school's gifted and talented education program practices for alignment with Maryland's criteria for excellence in gifted and talented education. Alignments must uphold the standards for gifted student identification, service delivery, extensive data analysis, curriculum development, and professional learning for staff. Tonight, we are going to present Springfield with their E-Gate banner that they get from the State Department, and a certificate of recognition by the board. Springfield is going to also attend a statewide celebration of the governor's proclamation of February 2019 as Gifted and Talented Education Month. So I'm going to invite Mrs. Rupenthal, the principal, if she would like to state a few things about what they've learned in the process, and share.
Sure. It's been a very reflective process. My team is amazing. Not only the magnet team of teachers, but also all of the teachers that have contributed by giving documentations of everything they're doing with our merit and talented students. So it's been an amazing process, and we've learned a lot in the three years.
So additionally, this evening, we are recognizing teachers and students. They're also being commended by the Maryland State Department of Education and the Maryland State Advisory Council on Gifted and Talented Education for their outstanding accomplishments. And this evening, I will be announcing the names of teachers who were named as Outstanding Educators in Gifted and Talented Education, Teachers as Leader, and also our Outstanding Student for her accomplishment.
Okay, and with that, I'd like to invite the board members to go down front, and we'll recognize Springfield first.
So at this time, I invite Principal Jenny Rupenthal to announce the names of her team members who are here, and if they would join our board members at the front for a photograph with the certificate.
Andy Katzel, Assistant Principal. Brittany Miller, Magnet Coordinator and Math Teacher. Sarah Camden, Math Teacher. Danielle Black, Science Teacher. Ace Sworz, Science Teacher. Henry Hoffman. And Mariah Clowman, Clowlin. Mariah is the Science Teacher.
That's the banner that goes on the front of the school.
Exactly. Educators in Gifted and Talented Education, Teacher as Leader. Student Accomplishment in Gifted and Talented Education, Ms. Emma Maroquin Ontiveros. These teachers have done extensive professional learning and curriculum development. She is a Grade Five student from Eastern Elementary School. We're very, very proud to celebrate them. So beginning with Mrs. Erica Hartley, Lead Teacher, Eastern Elementary. Emma, if you'd like to come on up?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I want to mention that Mrs. Bechtel, the principal, is also here to support Emma. Mrs. Jen Redding, Gate Teacher. Mrs. Ashley Stottlemyre, Gate Teacher, Sharpsburg Elementary. Mrs. Ashley, or excuse me, Mrs. Heidi Streit, Gate Teacher, Williamsport Elementary. And Mr. David Warrenfeltz, Lead Teacher, Eastern Elementary. And Mrs. Danielle Wance was unable to join us this evening. She's a Gate Teacher at Rockland Woods Elementary.
And we'll have some more information we want to present here a little bit later in the program. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Michael. At this time, we'll have public comment, and I'd like to read from Board Policy KD. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged, but not required, to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools, except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Lee Zahn. Mr. Zahn?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you all today. Before I begin, I just want to thank you all for everything that you do. I realize that you do this most likely to give back to the community, invest in our students, and I appreciate that very much. I, as a parent of three children, two have graduated the program, the third is a junior now in Tech High. I'm here tonight just to share some comments or some observations that I've acquired over the last year. I've been meaning to get here a little bit earlier, but I made it tonight. The first comment that I want to just offer up is that, in some ways, I see National Park Service being very similar to the Washington County Public Schools. Similar in the way that, one, it is an important institution that the public values and holds at a high standard. But more importantly, I see both of our entities as probably not being funded to the level that we would like it to be, that we certainly would like to see that. I'm sure that you all are aware of where, if you had more money, where that money would go in your priorities. Park Service has faced this challenge probably for the last 20 years. And the way Park Service has answered that challenge is through volunteers. In fact, a large component, if you go to any National Park Service unit, a lot of that now is being done by volunteers. So in offering this thought to you all, possibly looking at what ways, and it was a mind shift for Park Service. We were at a point where, you know, we do things the way we've always done. But we did that mind shift, and that's really the way we're able to provide to the level that we are now. So that's the one comment that I'd want to offer to you. Now, I know that you probably have confidentiality and PII information concerns to address, but to look again as to what ways maybe volunteers can help you maximize your resources. The second comment that I want to offer is with my son, who last year was in 10th grade at Smithsburg High School. And he was having issues with his teachers. It wasn't just one isolated case, it was actually with a number of his teachers. And I took to the point where I actually sat in every one of his classes that he did not know and he did not expect, but that was a commitment that I had, wanting to see him succeed in class, and to find out what exactly those issues were for myself. It was very enlightening, to say the least. And from that, kind of came away with some strong observations. The first and probably the strongest thing is really asking the question of who's in charge of the class. Like with me, with what I do with law enforcement, I have to establish myself. And going through, from the very first period to the very end of the period, you could see teachers' varying abilities. So that's the first thing. Who's in charge of the class? Some teachers were much more clear and capable of doing that than others. I saw that, in my mind, there was discipline. Discipline policy was a question. When I saw students directing profanity at teachers, and for whatever reason, that was acceptable, to me, that's a huge concern. And again, I don't know the full story behind all that, but I do see, you know, I observed this, and I had to wonder what was going on. The next point was just with cell phones. Every class, cell phones were a distraction. Very few teachers even addressed it, most of it ignored it, and just operated around it. That affected the ability that I saw in the learning environment. Contrast that, this year, my son is now over in Tech High, entirely different environment. When it came to orientation night, every teacher was very clear and specific on if you bring out a phone, these are going to be the consequences. Teachers established who was in control. So there's that. Something else, too, with accountability. Something else that I'm aware of, and I know firsthand, is that, you know, there should be some consequences for students that turn in work late. If you, as a teacher, say, "This assignment is due on this day," and that student turns it in late, okay, thank you, there should be consequences to that, not getting full I do also, I'm aware, last year, there were four or five suicide attempts on Smithsburg High School grounds, and that is concerning. I don't know what resources are there for it. I do monitor the radio traffic, and I know Sheriff's Deputy Barnhart, it's amazing what he has to deal with. So I would like to speak further, I'm not going to have that time. I will be available at the end of this meeting, if you would like to come. I'll be happy to talk about any of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zahn. Is there anyone else who'd like to take this opportunity to address the board during public comment? All right. At this time, we'll have board member response to public comment. Anyone? No?
I just would like to say, I'd like to thank you for coming tonight, and I would hope that your example of coming to the board would also entitle some of the other parents that have concerns to also come and speak of their issues to the board. So thank you for coming and sharing your observations.
Anyone else? All right, at this time, we'll have old business. We have none, and so we'll move on to new business. First item of new business is an item of consideration, the Smithsburg High School Public-Pprivate Partnership. Mr. Prue? Mr. Willow? And you have some guests with you to be introducing?
I do thank Mrs. Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. This evening, staff is presenting to you, for your consideration, a public-private partnership memorandum of understanding for a renovation to the stadium at Smithsburg High School. Tonight with me is Mr. Willow, Principal of Smithsburg High School, Carol Ganley, the president of the Smithsburg Athletic Booster Club, and Danielle Heatherington, who is their concession stand manager. This project brings forth an opportunity to develop team rooms down in the stadium that don't currently exist, to build a new concession stand. WCPS has made several renovations to the concession stand over the last year, including a renovation just before the start of this school year's football season. We're also looking at adding a referee/trainer's room to the facility and a new ticket booth to replace some of the facilities that are there and are aging and are needing service. Staff has been in discussion with these individuals for well over a year, looking at various opportunities, looking at some preliminary designs that have been done and some estimates, and we believe we have brought forth to you a plan that is beneficial for the community, beneficial as well for the Board of Education. As you can see in the documents, this proposal comes at a cost of approximately $1.1 million. It is nearly a 50-50 split between Board of Ed, which includes athletic funds from the Smithsburg High School Athletic Fund, and funds from the Smithsburg Athletic Booster Club. The school system will be forward-funding a portion of the funds for the Booster Club in the form of a 10-year loan coming from the school's, the school system's loan account. Those funds are currently available, and that would be repaid over a 10-year note. And with that, staff is here to, and Booster Club members are here, to take any questions. I would also note that, you know, this renovation also takes care of a handful of safety concerns, ADA concerns, additional restroom concerns that do exist on that campus, especially when there is severe weather. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
President Williams, I ask for the approval of the memorandum of understanding by and between the Board of Education of Washington County and Smithsburg Athletic Booster Club Incorporated, and to authorize the Smithsburg Athletic Booster Club Incorporated to pursue naming rights agreements to be presented to the Board of Education for final approval at a date in the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Mr. Right now, second. Thank you. Any discussion, questions for Mr. Prue or our guests?
Sure. I just, having not played at Smithsburg, I understand it's been challenging through the years, and what are some of the issues that this will address?
Our concession stand is, does not meet the Health Department requirements at this time, and we have been band-aiding it for quite a few years, and now it's just time, and it is one of our fundraisers, I mean, to raise money for the athletic program, so that's very much needed. We just have a small, I guess it looks like a little shed that they stand in for ticket, as a ticket booth, and it's, it's bug-infested. How's that? We're hoping that this will add some much-needed storage down in that area. Our referees have no place to go to when they come to our field. In case of bad weather, our teams have no place to go. I mean, usually, the visiting team goes on the bus, our teams. We have a small storied shed that has a tractor and stuff in it, but other than that, it's like head for the hills. It will also help the trainer. It'll be, there will be a trainer room for our trainer. She, right now, her room is up the hill, so she has a Polaris, is that what it's called? Polaris, that she takes kids up and down the hill, and hopefully with this room, she'll have an area to aid them during games and during practices.
Any other questions? No? No further discussion, and we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, it's like we have five affirmative votes. Motion carries, student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the, I would like to thank all of you, though, on behalf of the past athletes, present athletes, and the future athletes of Smithsburg High School, and the community of Smithsburg. Thank you so much. It will also help the trainer, it'll be, there will be a trainer room for our trainer. She, right now, her room is up the hill, so she has a Polaris, is that what it's called? Polaris, that she takes kids up and down the hill, and hopefully with this room, she'll have an area to aid them during games and during practices.
Any other questions? No? No further discussion, and we're ready for the vote, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, it's like we have five affirmative votes, motion carries, student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the, I would like to thank all of you though, on behalf of the past athletes, present athletes, and the future athletes of Smithsburg High School, and the community of Smithsburg, thank you so much.
We're excited for Smithsburg High, very excited. Our next item for consideration is tonight's consent agenda, Mr. Bakedal?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight I have six items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakedal, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for 1,028 Apple iPads and cases to Apple Incorporated at a total cost of $359,840. Design-build school sign at Boonsborough Middle School to sign here at a cost of $33,594, and design-build school sign at North Hagerstown High School to H&amp;M Signs Incorporated at a cost of $42,900. Student information system to EduPoint Educational Systems at a cost of $132,177.01. Broadband service to Antietam Broadband at a recurring monthly charge of $8,474. Technology work order system renewal to Salmonage at a cost of $50,468.98, and VMware licenses to Applied Technology Services at a cost of $181,830.
Thank you, Mr. Bakedal, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ridenar, any questions for Mr. Bakedal? Any discussion?
Just a, can you talk a bit more about the, the two signs, what will be the big change at those schools? Just mainly they're getting electronic signs, right?
Yeah, basically, yeah. At Boonsborough, I don't believe, has a sign, or North's is...
There's a sign out along Pennsylvania Avenue, so I think they're upgrades the signs, we're supporting them at the rate that we normally would support a sign, and then the schools are contributing the balance of the project, that's right.
So it'll be electronic, they'll be able to update it more frequently, things like that?
Yeah, correct, yep.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. I would like to note that we now have four members present, and that is still a quorum, so we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda. Okay, that's four votes in the affirmative, motion carries, student member concurs. Thank you. And now we're back to the second half of the superintendent's case.
So I have a number of announcements before I bring up our next presentation. We had our VEX Robot event scheduled for this past Saturday. With the anticipated bad weather, we decided to cancel that event and move it to February 2nd. So we did have 35 teams registered, I hope all 35 come on the 2nd. It's a very exciting competition, it runs most of the day, you have an opportunity to see the robots that students have built, and the challenge that's presented each year as part of the VEX Robot event. So if you have an opportunity to stop by South High on the 2nd, that'd be a great activity to, to attend, I'm looking forward to it. For our students, this Friday is an early dismissal day, two and a half hour early dismissal, teachers will be doing grades. It was originally scheduled to be, I believe, a professional day, and Monday will be a regular, excuse me, a full day of school, but this Friday's a half-day of school, and Monday's a regular, full-school day for students. We have an art exhibit at the University of Maryland on Thursday, they'll have an opening event at 6:30 for that event. We also have recognition of our employees, who recognize them for five years, 10, 15, 20, et cetera, and that is this Thursday, and I believe a number of board members, you will be there for that event, but we do want to congratulate our staff that have achieved certain milestones in their career. Also, this Saturday is Salt County Orchestra at North High at 7 o'clock, so that's another event for this week. And then, before our next board meeting on January 31st, which is Thursday a week away, will be our final listening session for, superintendent listening session for the year beginning at 6 o'clock. And with that information, I'd like to bring forward our final report, kindergarten readiness, and we have our team coming up, I'll let them introduce themselves here in a minute. Very excited about our kindergarten readiness, we've been working on this for the last two years, and what efforts, very, very concerned about how our students are reading a kindergarten, at what level they're prepared to learn at a kindergarten level, and we appreciate the board's support for a variety of things that we've been doing to try to address that issue, and I think tonight's the first that we're really seeing some fruits of that later, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Pugh and the team, please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. With me today is Dr. Stacy Henson, she is the Coordinator of Early Learning, and Kelly Longerbeam, she is the Early Learning Specialist and Lead Teacher. And thanks to Dr. Michael's vision and your support, and hoping for access and equity to high-quality programming, we are happy to bring with, bring you tonight the kindergarten readiness report for our students in 2018, 2019. Early in the fall, they took an assessment, a kindergarten readiness assessment, that includes four domains, social foundations, which includes things like sharing and learning routines, following multi-step tasks, multi-step directions, language and literacy, listening, asking questions and speaking, and mathematics, which includes things like counting to 20, physical well-being and motor development, students actually being able to hop and run, and follow basic safety rules, and independent use of tools. So before you, you see a table of our data over the last four years, and you can see that consistently, we've been very close in percentage of readiness. The top line designates just Washington County Public School, we were 36% in 15, 16, dropped a little to 33%, and then went up a little bit last year to 37%. As you can see, we fall slightly below the state, as they were 45, 43, and 45 again, fairly both have been flatlined. This year, we're very happy to announce that we have increased our kindergarten readiness scores to 43%. The state also went up slightly. For us, that's an increase of six percentage points, and the state also increased two percentage points, so we're very proud of those numbers. Additionally, if you look at the data from last year, the Maryland State being the gray bar, and Washington County Public Schools being blue, last year, we reported 37% readiness, that was next to the last ranking in the state, and well below state average. This year, we have a different picture to show you. We have moved in county ranking, closer to the state, although still slightly below, but we are now ranked 14th in the state, just a few percentage points below the state When you take a look at the same chart, but we're looking this time at just those that participated in a public pre-K program. Across the state of Maryland, last year, we came in at 43% of our students that participated in a public school pre-K at 43%. We ranked just one percentage point above the state average for public pre-K. This year, this is really data that we're super proud of, this year, last year, that was 15th, we retired for 15th. This year, as you can see in this chart, we are now fourth in the state, and I'm going to repeat that information, we are, our pre-K programs are now ranked fourth in the state, with having 54% demonstrating readiness, well above the state. We're super proud of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our staff that has allowed this to happen with high-quality instruction, and really dedication to early learning. If you look at it, part of the, the data that you see is a result of the pre-K expansion that both Dr. Michael and the board have consistently allowed us to, to work with. In 2016 and 17, we allowed access for 735 students, half of those, or 555 of those participated in half-day programming, and the remaining were full-day. You can see, we completely flipped that in 2017, 18, and that's actually the cohort of students that this data reflects, that we're sharing this evening. So we allowed access to 825 students, 700 of which were now full-day, and the remaining are half-day. The current year that we're in right now is allowing us to give access to 945 students, 910 of those which are full-day spots, and only 35 which are half-day, which typically serves our students with disabilities that are, that half-day is more appropriate for Also, in this year, this is the first year that we've, we've been able to allow full-day access at every elementary school. So every elementary school has an opportunity for students in that catchment zone to give full-day programming to our students, and we're hope, very hopeful that we will continue to expand. This line chart shows you a lot of the same information that I just shared with you, but in a different format. So if you look over the last three years, you'll see, slightly, the state has gone up a little bit in kindergarten readiness, right alongside Washington County, but we're closing the gap a little bit, so we're continuing to see an upward spike in our data, which is great news for us, and a result of the expansion and, and a lot of the professional development that we've put in place. If you just pull out the subgroup of those that have participated in our pre-K programming across the state, they are now also seeing an upward trend to 45%, but if you look at the, those participating in our Washington County Public School programmings, with that 54% spike, that is really great news for us and for our team. In addition to that, Kelly's going to speak to some other efforts that we've put in place to help ensure kindergarten readiness for all students.
Good evening. Just as Dr. Henson shared, one of our main, big efforts has been expanding our pre-Ks. As Dr. Henson shared, over the past couple of years, we have expanded, and we're seeing the benefits from that expansion. You know, we're very fortunate to have a superintendent, a board, that values and understands the importance of early learning. I know we want to continue that expansion, and Dr. Michael has proposed five additional spots in his proposed budget for next year, and we're, we're really hoping we can make that happen. Also, we have been providing opportunities where Dr. Henson and myself has been going out to each elementary school, sitting down with the pre-K team, the kindergarten team, the administration, the lead teachers, and sharing this KRA data with them, because sometimes it's overwhelming, you see all of this, and you're not sure what to do with it. So we're sitting down with them, helping them understand, you know, how they can filter it, how they can sort it, how they can use that for their next steps when they're looking at instruction for those students. Also, we gathered a team of pre-K teachers, content specialists, over the summer, and we started looking at our pre-K curriculum. How can we revise that? How can we enhance it? How can we make it better? But still keeping that mindset of developmentally appropriate practices as we're working on this. And actually, we've continued this work throughout the whole school year, and we have a group of teachers tonight that are actually working at 820 Commonwealth on the science curriculum as we speak at the moment. Also, we're providing professional development opportunities for not only our pre-K teachers, but our pre-K paraprofessionals, our lead teachers, our administration, our case managers, and topics varying from behavior management, curriculum instruction, best practices, technology, we're meeting the needs of not only, you know, the students, but the teachers, what do they need to instruct to have a higher impact for that readiness? High-quality programming, the state has a program called EXCELs, which, if you're familiar with it, they look at a school system or a program, and you can publish at a Level 5, which is the highest. In order to reach that Level 5 in EXCELs, they have to go through a process called accreditation, where the state comes in, and the validators come in, and they look at our schools, and they're making recommendations and improvements, which helps strengthen our program. Currently, we have 12 schools that have published at that Level 5 rating for EXCELs. Four schools are currently going through that rating right now this school year, and then our timeline is for the remainder of the schools to go through that program next year. So all 25 of our schools will have that Level 5, high-quality programming. Also, we have a great partnership with our birth-to-5 staff here. We attend their monthly think-tank meetings there, we participate and help facilitate some of their play groups, their taught times, and we especially have a great relationship with them when we're looking at transitions. When we're looking at, so maybe they have some two-year-olds, what three-year-old program is going to be best for them? When we're looking at their threes that might be in a program, which pre-K is going to help serve those students the best? And then additionally, if they have four-year-olds, what is going to be the best placement for them in kindergarten? How can we help them be successful? And then also, you know, this is not just our effort, it's a community awareness. How can we get all of our partners involved? At the beginning of the school year, our pre-K teachers are able to do home visits with their families and their students. This year, we had the opportunity, because of the Striving Readers Grant, each teacher was able to bring 50 books into that home to give to that child. It was amazing to see that, and just, it was amazing, and the families were so grateful, but just help, having those books in the homes will help impact that. We also had a strong early childhood advisory council here in Washington County. Dr. Henson actually serves on the leadership board of our council, and it's not just made up of Washington County employees, it's made up of representatives from local agencies here in the county, who all have that same focus of kindergarten readiness, how can we make it best for our kids? And we would love to have any of you attend any of our meetings, I think the next one is in March, so we'll have to get you that date. We also have a birth-to-five transition meeting. Back last May, we had our first meeting, where we pulled all of our kindergarten staff, teachers, and pre-K teachers. We met at the library downtown, and had a, a meeting where teachers were able to share with the, the kindergarten staff, what these students can do, what are their strengths, you know, how can we help them be successful from where they left off in pre-K to kindergarten? We've had such great feedback from that meeting, we're planning to have another transition meeting May 2nd as well again. Books for Babies, we have a partnership with this organization, which some of you may be aware, has been going on for 20 years now, and this fall, they actually passed out their 30,000th book, and it is an organization that has the goal of giving every infant born at Meritus a book, and tips on reading for your child and the importance of it. So that's a great partnership we have. We also are lucky to be able to house the Western Maryland Early Childhood Conference, which is at Hagerstown Community College every September. Dr. Henson and myself have had the privilege actually to speak at some of the breakout sessions during that conference, and the audience of that target, or the audience is childcare providers, daycare providers, Head Start, directors, public school employees, and it's a great way for us to have outreach, and also, you know, we've actually been invited into some of the centers to help provide readiness skills with those families and students. And then lastly, we're actually currently looking at planned professional development for childcare providers. So we have a lot going on.
And at this point, we're just happy and appreciative of the efforts of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, and our students, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, thank you. Questions?
No questions, I just want to say thank you so much for all you do. I was really excited to see these, these results. I knew they'd be good, but it was, it was just wonderful to see, to know that, you know, all of the things that you're doing, the many things that you're doing to help our students, it's wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you, we are very proud of the team, that we have the opportunity to lead.
Anyone else? I too would like to say thank you. I, I think it's, it's amazing what you can do with a vision and with the support of a board, and to think that we've been able to offer this full-day pre-K access to so many kids, what, almost 1,000 students, at every elementary school. I just... I just think this is going to make a big difference in the lives of 945 students, and the thought of making that opportunity available to even more in the coming year. I think we're doing great things, and I thank you for your fine leadership and, and the hard work that you do to make these good things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael.
And that's all I have for the evening, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is personnel action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Board Members. As discussed earlier at closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of tonight's personnel actions.
Please approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenar, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenar. Any questions? Okay, so our motion is on approval of personnel actions as discussed in closed session earlier this evening, all those in favor? All right, four affirmative votes, thank you. Next, we'll have reports to the board. Mr. Ridenar, would you like to begin down there at your end with HR?
Yes, the HR committee will be meeting next Tuesday at 9:15.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bigford?
The Finance Committee has an update, we will now be meeting, we were going to meet on February 5th at 1 o'clock, that's been moved to 2 o'clock, February 5th.
February 5th at 2?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Yes, Curriculum and Instruction will meet on February 26th at 4:00 PM in the Board Conference Room.
25th at 4?
Six.
26th at 4. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mackley, do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to miscellaneous business, and that would be future agenda items. We have a future agenda item list. Today, we discussed making a change to our February 5th schedule of events. We will not be having the budget work session early in the day, and during our business meeting, we'll be having a legislative briefing from Mrs. Cade and Mr. Trata. We have upcoming a budget advocacy and review committee presentation on March 5th, and then several more legislative briefings to keep us apprised of what's happening down in Annapolis. If you have any suggestions for agenda items, please let me know or Dr. Michael know so that we can have them placed on the agenda for a future meeting. We'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Mackley, would you like to begin down there?
I have nothing.
All right, Mrs. Murray?
Nothing, except to repeat that I was very excited to see the kindergarten readiness assessment results, and I know that they're going to continue to get better. So, I'm just excited.
Thank you. Mr. Bigford?
Same here.
You're excited as well?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Ridnauer?
Nothing.
Nothing for you? All right. I have nothing to comment, and so we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.